2021, and we're going to start with an agenda check. Is there anything that anybody wants to say about the agenda? Nope. Okay, great. So we're going to move on to our first item of business, which is wildfire mitigation planning.
My, oh, there you go. Good evening, virtual people and commissioners and everybody. I'm here with Tyler Nice and the Electric Division Manager. Also invited Larry Longworth, who is the Electric Dispatch Supervisor, and Shane Tennyson, who is our Arbor Supervisor for the tree program. Both Shane and Larry will be with us at the end of the presentation to answer questions, and Tyler will talk about a few things, and I will also. One of the things I'll do is a little preamble from my lawyer friends. They are reminding us that we are talking about present programs and programs that might be worked on in the future as far as our mitigation, and we're not talking about the past as much. Next slide, please. I'll do a couple basics around wildfire. Health is grounded. Tyler's going to talk about the programs that are in place now. Then I'll talk a little bit about, you know, creating a wildfire mitigation plan and what that might mean, and then give a few examples of some potential mitigations just for illustration purposes. We'll wrap up with a lot of time left for Q and A. Like I said, Shane and Larry will also be available to give us some more detailed answers that perhaps Tyler and I can. Next slide, please. So by definition, really, a wildfire is an uncontrollable fire. In general, what we're talking about from the last general accepted ways to talk about wildfires is there's three components. There's an ignition source, which could be anything. It could be lightning, you know, it could be a muffler, or it could be a power line. So from a couple of years ago, I was reading some statistics from California. Approximately 10% of wildfires are started by power lines. Of those 10%, by far and away, most of the fires are started from vegetation contacting the wires, or from hardware-type failures, connectors, crossarms, that kind of thing. Another key ingredient to a wildfire is fuel. Lots of dry vegetation has been the big concern. That's the most common fuel source right now. Disease, drought, insects, climate change, all these kind of things have contributed, especially in the Western United States, to a large amount of fuel. The third thing that typically happens in a wildfire situation is it occurs during the so-called red flag warning conditions. That's where we have high winds, very low humidity, and typically high temperatures. One of the things that's noted is that the red flag warnings have been increasing, and again, climate change, or you know, whatever the reasons are. I was reading some things this weekend about wind speeds. Fires are occurring in Southern California now, where the wind speeds are relative without explosive amount of vegetation and any sort of ignition source. Next slide, please. So the question is, what does EWEB do about wildfires? And, you know, you can click on a link to our homepage, and there's some information about it there. Really, what I'd like to stress is the work we do right now, even as addressing wildfire mitigations. And I told you, the two biggest instigators of ignition sources with utilities typically is vegetation and hardware failures. So I was going to talk about the vegetation program, but we also have a 10-year PUC program that's very detailed as well to really address the lot of our sources of ignition. One of the things that we want to talk a little bit more about tonight is developing a wildfire mitigation plan, which is really just to evolve our current program into some more distinct components that will enhance our resiliency to fires and to reduce ignitions. And a key part of this is really keeping the board involved. There's a, you know, if we had unlimited resources, we could make a magic system, perhaps, that would never start a fire. But there's all these tug-awards that are in place that, you know, financial and all kinds of things that play into what our plan might look like and how big it might be. One of the things I'd like to also mention, too, is that this is sort of an evolving thing. wildfires have been around forever, but obviously, we're hearing more and more about. And I kind of wanted to use the analogy of driving. Maybe some of us rode our electric bikes here, I'm not sure. But, you know, when we get in our car, we're driving somewhere with some pretty air assurances we're going to get there without even thinking about it. There's a whole host of things that have gone into building cars, laws, cultural habits, all these things that keep us safe in getting there. So we need to do a little bit of that kind of thing with our wildfire mitigation efforts. So it takes everybody involved, state, everybody in utility, really, and outside. So, next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Tyler right now, and he's going to give us a lot more detail about some of the things I mentioned that we're doing right now.
Thank you, commissioners, for the topic tonight. Again, Tyler Nice for Electric Division Manager for the record. So I'm going to share three slides with you that are really what we've operationalized in programs we have right now that we do that reduce risk of fire and that are maintenance-oriented. Then I'll share a slide a little deeper on what we do in red flag events. Rod defined what a red flag event is, but we do some actions when those come. And then also talk about things we have planned for this year as part of that distinct wildfire management plan that we have efforts underway. So vegetation, by far, is, you know, one of our biggest, arguably, one of our biggest impacts for both reliability and fire risk, like Rod talked about. And we have a vegetation plan that, on a cyclic manner, we go through the system and trim by a feeder basis, and that's mainly trees, you know, clearance to the lines. What we also do is we yearly go through what we classify as high-fire-risk circuits, which is basically some lines in the South Eugene area, and then also everything up river. We'll go through those and do what we call spot checks, trim them back in the spring. Annually, we do about 280 miles in our regular program of this maintenance. And then in this hot spotting, this year, we just got done with it last week, that program for the year, and it was around 125 extra miles on top of the program that the crews go through. The next piece, like Rod mentioned, is hardware failure or contact of equipment due to failure. That one's mitigated through PUC and ONM maintenance plans. So we have, like Rod said, on a 10-year basis, we come through the whole system and inspect. And these are PUC-required programs, and that's things like, you know, the poles. We have a third-party inspector inspect those. We have, look at the crossarms, you know, the components, the insulators, again, more clearance. And all those inspections really get forms filled out and the inspection materials, and they turn into job packets and get repaired. And so there's one workflow that basically just goes through with the line crews and other groups that fix these issues. The regular line patrols bullet, what that's about is our single-resource people, mainly the troubleshooters, they also, in addition to that, those PUC-required inspections, they go through and they comb through the whole system, and they end up going through the whole, the whole system on a yearly basis. It's more of a high-level look, and they'll, as kind of filler work in between appointments and things, they'll be able to inspect. Again, those spit out another set of work that we keep up on those maintenance. Then the other two bullets here are more project-based, a little more strategic. Upriver is a project that we're completing this year that the pole-top transformers up there, we are converting those with new ones that will basically go from two-phase in a neutral to single-phase in a neutral. The loading allows that. That has some advantages for other work we're doing up there, but in context of this, it basically takes, you know, two wires in the neutral, and you can imagine that's kind of, that could be like a cradle to a tree, and that makes it just one wire so that the tree, or the debris, or whatever it is, more, doesn't have a place to land, so to speak. So that is a, we call it rolling taps, something we do whenever we can. We do that in town as well. The FEMA, we've had several FEMA projects, specifically a couple that have been linked to the 2016, 2019 reimbursements from FEMA and those storms. And those are underground conversions from overhead, and those fundamentally reduce risk of fire. They have lots of other reliability benefits as well, but because they're not above ground and can't contact that vegetation or other components. So those are kind of our programs we have right now. I'll move into, if you can go to the next slide. This slide's more centered around what we do in red flag. And so we do have some specific operational changes and system changes we make when a red flag comes. So this diagram here is really a simplistic view of the system. On the left, we have the large transmission lattice towers you might see driving up and down I-5 around the system. Those are on the hundreds of thousands of volts level. Those come into town in our substations around the city, step that down to around the 12,000-volt level, and it gets fed out on these feeder lines that are made on your main thoroughfares and things, and the tap lines split off of that, branch out to neighborhoods and the service lines to the homes. Each portion of these are protected a little different, and you can draw a parallel with this system with the panel in your house, which is what I'll do to kind of explain how this works. So the panel in your house, a main feed comes in as a main breaker, and then you have all your circuit breakers, and it branches off. And you can think of that, that main line coming in like your transmission line for us and the substation, and then the feeder lines, each one of those circuits. Now, the tap lines might be off of individual breakers in your panel that might trip off. And then your service lines, a lot of times, you'll have more than one outlet on one of those circuits that may blow. We've all been in the situation where you have a heater on, an air dryer, a toaster oven, and a vacuum, or whatever it is, the combination blows the circuit breaker. And that's really due to a thermally-oriented kind of overload that accumulates over time. What we're talking about here is a little different than that. And if you've heard of a GFCI, Ground Fault Current Interrupter, what that's doing in your kitchen or outdoors is looking for really instantaneous situations that might go to ground, that could hurt you or burn something up, water, or, you know, a faulty piece of equipment or something like that. And that's kind of what I'm focusing on here, is the type of protection that's happening. It's more those instantaneous events. We call them faults. So when we talk about faults, faults can be damaged equipment, animals on the line, car hip poles, vegetation, it's kind of the main one here. And these faults, when they're protected, is a lot different than the circuit breakers in your house. In the substations, we have devices called relays and reclosers, and they're 24/7 high-speed monitoring that are sensing current and voltage. And if they see a spike in volt, spike in current, or a dip in voltage, they activate and they may take action. And so the type of actions they'll take is, one, it might, if it's a high enough fault, bad enough fault, it'll trip it off right away, no questions asked. A lot of times, it's under that level, and it might have a time delay where it takes a little bit to trip it off, and that might give the fault a chance to what we call clear. It could be something that burns off, or an animal that hits and leaves, not leaves, but falls. The other thing we have is reclosing. Reclosing is what happens when this fault is sensed on the transmission, these feeder lines. It will attempt to, it'll clear off the power and then reconnect it three times. And on the third time, it'll lock out, and that requires human intervention to go out and reset everything. And that also requires us to look at it before we re-energize it. Now, in a red flag, all that background goes to say that in a red flag, the point of all those chances and all those different levels is to try to keep your power on even if something touches the line, basically, as much as possible for reliability. In the red flag operations, to reduce the risk of fire, we disable those reclosers so it's more of a one-and-done, and we turn off those time delays so it's anything that happens, it trips off. That equates really to more outages likely during those red flag conditions and more time to restore them. Because the other thing we do operationally is when we go to restore them, we always patrol the lines in normal operation. But in a red flag, we'll also stop and call, before we issue a crew out, we'll call the supervisory 911 number to make sure there's no active fires, or landslides, or restricted access, or anything. And we also won't patrol after 9:00 PM for safety in the night. Along that goes along, that is, the third bullet is communicating all this out. So we have, the communication team has developed a communication plan around all this, and they have some evergreen messages that they stage up periodically for education or ahead of a red flag. We also talk about these modifications, answer questions, and proactively communicate them, and really let folks know that they might experience some impact in reliability. The other thing we do internally is really ramp up and enact more of an ICS-type protocol to make sure the awareness is there. Go to the next slide. So this slide is more around what we have planned this year going forward. So some of the things we're doing are, through legislation, there's a couple peer utility groups, and also PUC. There's a lot of reoccurring webinars right now that we're participating in. Lots of various staff are calling into these and keeping apprised of the changes in rules, and also the best practices we're learning from others. We're also creating, you know, this defined wildfire management plan. We're getting a consultant onboard to help lift that formal document, benchmark it with peers, and that QA piece, in addition to assigning some internal PM help to shepherd that, because it'll reach beyond just electric as well. We're also starting to participate with local emergency management, city, county, and others to be able to get our processes for response down. And that kind of goes into the situational awareness. We have a high situational awareness and treat these as ICS events going into a red flag, and that turns off a waterfall of communication and these, you know, changes in operation and communication we talked about. Through the years, we've worked through the wildfire management plan. We will be hitting all these different factors and documenting these plans that we already have formally, but also defining and benchmarking the criteria we have and developing some new ones, such as PSPs, the Public Power Safety Shutoffs are listed, and those will be something we'll be working through together with the consultant and other stakeholders. And I think with that, you can go to the next slide. I'll turn it back over to Rod to talk a little bit more about that mitigation plan in general.
So I thought I'd just kind of go over a few things that will be in a mitigation plan, and I think it's likely that the state will require something. And again, this is, we've got a lot of experience that's happened in California that we're really tuned into. They've got a template laid out that's pretty good. They've got all kinds of things figured out and experienced. And so one of the things that I think that's really going to be helpful to have the consultant in some of this reference stuff to is to how we define mitigation projects. Some of those projects, I can just give you some, maybe I should call it measures. They're not exactly all projects, because there's a number of things we could do that are not just project-related. But typically, these mitigation measures are divided into three categories. Electric grid hardening, a lot of non-grid hardening, and then EWEB kind of operation and organizational kind of things. Typical grid hardening, overhead to underground, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that, but converting wood poles to steel poles, for instance, or putting up insulated wire to keep the trees from making a spark, that kind of thing. Some non-grid hardening things, fire watch cameras, weather monitoring. Some of the utilities in California have the best weather systems in the planet, weather monitoring stations, those kind of things. Public and employee communications, we have to get better with that. Updating our data and our risk maps that tell us where our high-risk areas are for fires and losses and those kind of things, standards. Within the organization, maybe emergency management position, things like that, because one of the things that's so important for wildfire is the interagency and internet work, other utilities, all these kind of things. It's communicating with everybody around you, because we, even if it's only in our service territory, there is so many agencies involved with the emergency management process of that. Next slide, please. Talk about a couple examples of these mitigation projects. This one is very commonly referred to and pointed to to help reduce ignition sources. And so what I would say is that these kind of projects right now would fall, if we talk about our capital planning effort, they would fall into the heat of the risk base category of the strategic projects, or maybe a strategic program kind of thing. But in general, they reduce, greatly reduce the chance of ignition, because most of it was hardware and vegetation contact. And so if you reduce the source of ignition, that's the key goal there. Some of the advantages also are, and disadvantages, there's a positive and negative effect on reliability. So in a storm, snowstorm and all that, typically, underground is more reliable for the same reasons. Vegetation stays out of the way, and the animals, that kind of thing. It does take longer to repair underground outages, though, like in your neighborhood, John. Reduce costs, higher aesthetic value, typically, the community likes that. I think one of the big things to address is the cost. It's typically, we use estimates of around four times the overhead cost. And so putting circuits underground, I just took a stab at a couple, you know, plumb-bopped a couple potential costs for 25 miles in town, and you come up with roughly, and this was using the same FEMA kind of pricing and everything that Tyler just talked about, but that comes out to be about $37 million. A really targeted upriver program, underground targeted program, would be on the order of something like $16 million. That's just to give you some budgetary kind of estimates of what that might look like. One of the things that's kind of ironic is, of course, it's less resilience to seismic events, because as the stuff moves and shifts, it all comes apart. Next slide, please. The other one that gets a lot of press is the public safety power shut-offs Tyler referred to a little bit. So the great thing that obviously shut the power off does is completely eliminates the ignition source, right? One of the things, though, that it does mean is we have to be very carefully coordinated with city and other emergency management people. We have to have some pretty careful criteria about actually turning people's power off. Some of the lessons learned from folks in California and other areas, Washington, Montana, you know, if you do too much of these, and especially if the event is somewhere else and your lights are out for two days and there's no storm, that gets me fatiguing. One of the examples that is kind of similar to the whole COVID response, right? There's, we do some certain measures to do some protections, yet there's economic costs due to that, and there's confusion and all kinds of things. So all kinds of things, that little things, big things, technical difficulties within the utility to execute these kind of things, communications to focus, really key. I think one of the things that I hear a lot about from fellow utility folks is around fires caused for other emergencies. You know, if you shut the power off, the lights are off, the people's wells, the way to pump water, communications can go down if you're trying to communicate with people and you turn the power off, the internet goes off, you know, some of these kind of things. So we do have to be very careful and coordinated about the public power, public safety power Next slide, please. So I guess to kind of wrap it up, we're going to continue with our present work. We're going to work with the board to develop a plan and have, we'll bring a plan for probably towards the end of the year for review. And then as we go along, we'll talk through the normal budget and capital planning process to talk about spending and priorities and some of those kind of things. With that, I guess I'll just open it up to questions.
So I can't see anybody. So on my screen, everybody's camera is turned off. Is that what's going on?
No, we've got pictures of everybody.
Click on somebody's picture.
That's on Frank's picture on the bottom.
I know, okay. I think my is very, very slow is the problem. So.
You want me to keep a queue?
I might just, yeah.
I can see everybody right now. I can see Sonya and everybody. So if you want me to keep a queue, I said. Can everybody hear me okay?
Popped up for me, so I'll give it.
You can go ahead.
Okay, I want everyone right now, so I'll give it a try, as long as everyone can hear me. So I guess we'll just go around if people have questions, and I think that I will randomly call in people, if that's okay. And we will start with John.
That was a John, but we didn't get the, is it a John B?
It was, it was John Borowski. But if I'm breaking up, if my sound is breaking up, then John Brown, you go ahead and take over.
Okay. I'll do exactly what you were doing.
So John Brown, you take over the meeting.
Okay, yeah, your sound is freezing, so John Borowski. And then anybody else in the queue, I'll keep the queue.
Okay, thank you. I have just a couple of questions, but maybe after other people ask, I'll hand to others. First one was, is who issues the red flag warnings? Is that National Weather Service? And so they've got, they've got specific guidelines. It says if winds are 18 miles an hour, whatever, so that's okay. Then the second question I had was on the ONM, the 10-year plan thing. So once every 10 years, you do a total inspection, bringing in outside consultants, or is that a kind of rolling thing? Because our thing is so long, it takes 10 years to do the whole system, is that?
We're basically doing 10% a year. On the trees, it's a quicker turnaround, but, yeah, we're basically doing, every year, we're doing, we're doing continuously, and it's over the course of time. We cycle through the whole system, that's our PUC program.
That's kind of what I figured, kind of like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, start at one end and ride the other end, and start all over again. Good, so that's good to know. I guess, you know, one of the things that I think that we're going to struggle with is, is one, that, you know, when do you shut it off? And like I said, the trade-offs, you know? Is it every time the wind blows, we shut it off because we're worried, which is, in my view, is a legitimate concern, but yet, on the other hand, that has consequences. Like you said, you know, the traffic lights go out, the things go out. And, you know, if they're short-duration ones, you know, if it's from 7:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning, that's, in my view, that's one scenario. But Rod mentioned a couple of days, you know, then that's, you know, I'm thinking about me, I'm thinking, well, my cooler goes out for two days, I have significant losses and other, you know? So those are going to be some interesting discussions on where that balance is. The other question that I had, and this is just kind of, I know that we have service that goes up to VITA, but then we have the main transmission that goes from Carmen down. So is it easier for us to depower Carmen down? You know, like I said, if there's a, if there's a high-wind thing, if we take that one offline but leave the service up to VITA, is that an option that we have? And you don't have to answer that right now.
There's a couple of comments that I might just jump in here a little bit on Commissioner Borowski. So on your issue of PSPs being initiated, it's likely that there would be a, or will be, depending on how you look at this, a series of triggers. So a red flag warning is simply a warning, so that might be your first stage. Then you have to go through, are you actually witnessing the events on which the warning was issued for, right? So then you have to say, yes, the winds are indeed blowing in the places we thought they were blowing, it hasn't rained, there's other conditions. Maybe, maybe there's even certain disruptions that are starting even certain disruptions that are starting to occur. So it's, it's not going to be, oh, we get a red flag warning, we're going to shut people off. There's going to be different criteria, and there could potentially be different criteria for different places in our service territory, depending on the risk that those, that those would possess. A transmission line up by Carmen might be viewed differently than something in the South Hills, for example, because of the impact. But, and then to answer your, so a series of triggers. On the series, on the question around Carmen, the transmission line goes up to Blue River. It then, and that's, it feeds the town of Blue River through Lane Electric, and then it continues on up and it goes both to Carmen and then splits off and it goes, goes up to Cougar, or actually goes to Cougar and splits off to Carmen. So there's potential that you could sectionalize and disconnect part of that without disconnecting the rest of it.
Yeah, and thank you on that. That was just kind of a quick question. Yeah, and I think, you know, the same thing with the, with the turning power on and off, you know, if it's, you know, if it's in the city of Eugene and you've got four fire stations there, that's going to change your risk level as opposed to something where the nearest pumper truck is 20 miles away. So those will be interesting, I'm looking forward to trying to figure out those metrics and good luck with that. Thank you.
Mindy, would you like to go?
Yes, and I think I fixed my internet problem, so I should be a little smoother now. I'm not sure, though. So maybe I missed this because the presentation was a little bit spotty on my end because of my internet, but what is the timeline for the wildfire mitigation plan?
Well, it's going to be a continuously evolving thing, I think, but our goal is to get a draft by the end of the year. I believe the state of Oregon is kind of heard that they're looking for something by the end of 2022. IOUs or, you know, the Pacific Corps and those kind of folks are under a different timeline than, than the community owned utilities like, like us. So our goal is to get something in front of the board by, by the end of the year.
And then I just have one more question about communication. So I know like all of this is going to be like a continuous ongoing process, but do we have, do we have any communication coming out for people in anticipation of summer, the dry months? Do we have a new plan for that or, or, yeah, what is our communication plan?
Oh, that's a great question. In fact, has it migrated to the web page yet? I'm not sure. We're, so Joe Harwood right now is, is running a little project and program to evolve that. We've been meeting, I don't know, every couple, every other week and that kind of thing to put together an evolving message to send out in case of a red flag event or just general knowledge, there's, ask questions come up there kind of thing.
There are quite a few references, Commissioner, on our website and, and links to other resources. There's, there's a number of different groups that deal with fire mitigation in general, whether it's the Forest Service or the county, there's, there's a number of different ones. We, we are in process of doing some of our own communications as well, but I think that those, there's a number of good, good resources. Many of those go around this time of year to neighborhood associations, especially in the South Hills and others, and talk about how to make your own residents more immune to things. So there's some, some personal communications as well there.
When we did the pledge to prepare a couple of years ago, I think it was, right, for disaster preparedness, I thought that we did a really great job with that. And I'm just wondering if it'd be possible for us to do something like that around wildfire mitigation, because many people, like especially if you live in town, but you happen to live in a forested area, they might not know. So anyway, just one suggestion, I don't mean to get in the weeds here because you're all very smart and know what you're doing, but that is just one little suggestion from me.
Thank you. I think that we're in the sort of the infancy of that sort of a program, very parallel to the pledge to prepare, same, same communication group.
Great. That is all from me.
Mindy, you want to take over the queue or you want me to continue?
She froze. She froze up again.
Okay, Sonya, would you like to go then, Matt? You're muted.
I hit it and then it hit it again. Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Great, thanks. I have a couple of quick questions. One, so when we're in a red flag kind of setting, who, who makes the call on kind of who, you know, is that a group? Is that like you, Rod and Frank, or is it staff that are on the ground, ground witnessing it? Do we send extra staff to that area to kind of view the conditions?
So right now, the, when we know a red flag is coming, like we had this spring earlier, we had some pre situational meetings and discussions, but essentially when, when the red flag takes place, the operations folks have standing orders that they work through. And so they, they take the position of some of the things that Tyler explained in the operations and go through. We don't really, at this point, have not planned on sending extra people to the area or anything like that at this point.
Okay.
I think in the law, Commissioner Carlson, that there would be a defined process by which, if it went to the extreme, especially where you had a PSPS condition, there would be a defined process that would, would not rely on me, for example. You, you would want the, the operational awareness to be part of that, and so there would be a defined process. It's similar to what we do now, only probably extrapolated a little bit. Part of that is because of the importance of community outreach and communications and dealing and coordinating with other agencies. This last one was a little bit unique in the sense that we got the red flag warning less than 24 hours ahead of when the conditions were experienced. And so it wasn't like we had a lot, you know, 48 hours notice or something that we could put out advanced communication. So this one was actually experienced relatively quickly, but it'd be highly orchestrated, I would suspect.
So I guess one thing, just to make sure we're clear, we do not have a setup in place to proactively shut off power. We, if there is a car hit pole, if there is a fire burning, all these kind of things, we would shut off power in a, in a sort of reactive mode. But right now, if, one of the things we would really need is, is a way to broadcast pretty widely communication that we're going to shut people's power off ahead of time. And so, you know, we need to work with emergency managers and the 911 systems and whatever the emergency broadcast systems are and some of those things to, amongst other things, to get ready to do that outside of a just reactive mode. If we were in that position, I think if we, if the wind was coming up, we would start sending out and staging crews and doing stuff like that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we were talking about having a, like a red flag warning for over multiple days. It seems like typically with winds and I'm, I'm not a weather pattern expert here, but this is why I'm kind of asking if, if you have some knowledge of when it kind of ebbs and flows, but it doesn't seem like it would be typical that we would have like sustained winds through multiple days. It seems like they would kind of come at one point during the day, you know, the heat rises and it comes down. And so it doesn't seem like there would be a time when we would have like, we might be out for a number of hours if we decided that, you know, the wind was blowing too much. You know, we could be out during that time, but then like at night or, you know, at other times, the winds wouldn't be picking up as much. It seems like it ebbs and flows, but would it, I mean, are, are other areas experiencing it where they're seeing like multiple days of just sustained winds? Is that like what has happened down in California and such, or?
That definitely is what happens in California and to the north as well. And what I would say that be careful about saying what, what hasn't happened in the past because there would have been a fire, so.
Yeah, climate change is changing everything, right? Our models are probably not as good as they used to be.
And our weather prediction means, you know, it's, it's amazing the amount of horsepower that goes into predicting weather anymore, so. Anyway, we would get a red flag and they would typically it comes out and says it's going to be over an eight hour period or whatever it is. And so we would just follow during that period.
Okay, and then two other quick, one, I wrote in the packet that, you know, I mean, we obviously set up the generator program to help with resiliency during winter outages caused by snowstorms. How dangerous are those and are they restricted in red flag warnings from being turned on typically?
Yeah, and that is part of the discussions that have come from Washington, Montana and California in some cases about people, you know, that's another ignition source, you fire up a generator on the side of the house. And so again, this is part of what we need to do is work with emergency management and communications and what do we, we really need to work with fire departments, you know, what do you guys, how do you see this and how do you want to work with that?
Yeah, it seems like if we do the communication plan or, you know, something along the lines in the future, I fully support what Mindy brought up, I think that's a great idea. If we did something along those lines, maybe that idea around the generators could be a part of that since it's also something that we promoted. And then final question, are there other types of mitigation? I don't know, like sprinklers? If a transformer explodes, is there something that like comes out of the transformer and like foams up and covers the fire? And is there any of that kind of technology that, it seems like it would make sense to have something like, especially around those transformers, because if a tree hits those, those things just, they pop, right? Is there technology in place to prevent that?
The closest thing right now anyway is the, what the fire retardant or the F R, we call the.
Esther oil.
Esther oils. Yeah, there's, there's lower flammable oils that, that we can purchase and put in. Again, it's more expensive, but, but typically there's, that has not been a mitigation effort that I've seen.
Okay. So the, the lower oils, if they're more expensive, are they, I know we switched to a more environmentally clean, sounds like those two are potentially incompatible?
It's the same oil.
Same oil. They have a higher flash point, the, the new oils we've been using, the Esther oils, the, the trade terms FR3, they have a higher flash point, so mitigates that.
Okay, all right. Thank you, those are my questions. Turn it over.
Matt? I'll give this a shot, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thanks. Just briefly, thanks for the presentation materials and the mini materials, they're both really helpful. This is a super important conversation in my view, and reducing risk of EWEB lines igniting fires is extremely important. And that's, I mean, that's why we're here. We did just have a 10 acre fire in Lane County last week, and so as you all know, the risk this year is very high and, and we're likely to see the trend of increasing fire risk over time, so I'm grateful we're having this conversation. I, I don't, it doesn't feel like we maybe allotted enough time for the conversation tonight, but maybe, maybe you could correct me, perhaps staff get what they need from the board this evening. I do have a handful of questions, that I think are most important and most important. One, is there a difference in the circuit disconnect?
Just get a little closer to your mic, you know, your phone.
It's, I'm using my headphones, so.
Go ahead, you're okay, you're good now.
I can try this, is that any better?
Yep.
Okay. Is there a difference in the circuit disconnect mechanism between transmission lines and distribution lines? And if so, is there a way to address the lines with the higher risk?
Well, there's, in transmission and distribution, there's, there's circuit breakers, which are, you know, the mechanical devices, you see the big ones. And then in distribution, there's the fusing. And so fuses type, that is a mitigation effort that a number of utilities have employed is, is changing out the fuses to a less explosive flammable one. There's ways to automate protection devices and upgrade them, that's another mitigation that a lot of utilities have used, is putting more protection devices, electronic versions of the, the substation transmission breakers out there so they can control them remotely very quickly. But at some point, it does come, come down to the fusing, there's more fuses by far out there than, than anything.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I, I guess I'll just state, I think my bigger, biggest concern, I mean, I think we need to pay attention to mitigation everywhere where we have lines, but from my perspective, the South Hills is especially concerning just because there's a very high wildfire risk. The ability for people to get out of that neighborhood is not great, and of course there's a high density of people living in that area and their distribution lines, not transmission lines, which as I understand it are just a little, they're not as quick to disconnect, but maybe I, I'm not sure if I understand it right. Anyway, I'll just voice that I have, I do have a concern about the South Hills and making sure that we're paying attention to that particular area, because right of anywhere in Eugene, it's definitely the highest risk. My other question is, and Sonya mentioned generators, certainly there are other ways to provide power during outages. As we run into increased likelihood of red flag warnings, are there measures that we can take perhaps help assisting people who have medical equipment, for example, that requires electricity to keep people alive? Are there ways that we can support people in, in getting battery sets or other things that would help reduce the risk for those individuals as we look at the potential for more red flag shut offs?
Yeah, that's a really good point. Vulnerable, there's a lot of vulnerable folks in the community, even to the point you could say a hospital in general is vulnerable. And so many of the utilities do provide some kind of backup power. Again, this is a, I don't want to, it's something we could do, and so it's just very, a lot of conversation.
Okay, thanks.
I would, I would also add, there's, you know, a medical device, for example, many of those are, are actually geared for short outages, they do have batteries in them. Part of the importance of the communications is so that if you do have a medical device and there's an expected outage, that you have time to charge everything. And so the communications becomes really important for people in those types of scenarios as well. So I think the communications piece of this becomes more and more important.
Yeah, agreed, thanks. That's all my questions.
And I'll go last, even though we're out of time. Thank you, everybody's asked some great questions. I just have a couple quick ones. On South Hills, I agree with Matt, that's, that's a priority, not to marginalize or minimize any, any other area of their importance, but there's nursing homes, there's all sorts of things. It's about the liability, because I look at the, the claims for power, food, you know, every time we have a power outage, we buy new computers and freezers and all those other things that everybody gets. So is there any legislation pending or is there any legislation existing that if we are proactive trying to save lives and then property and that particular priority, where we may not be held totally liable for that? Because, you know, if we start turning the power off more often, especially in areas like South Eugene, where there's thousands of residents and lots of options, people get stuck with garage door opens and don't open. I mean, is there a legislation pending or should we pursue legislation to cover us on that? Or should we just say that, you know, we may have to pay 50 or 100,000 bucks every time we shut it down, but it's a lot better than, than not shutting it down and having the laws alive?
There's a lot of areas where legislation will be a part of this. And again, it just goes back to the automobile speed limits, all these kind of things, right? And so they're, they're basically in their infancy, at least in Oregon. What I would say is that Jason is very. What I would say is that Jason is very, he was very, doing any of those things, we're looking into them, there's a lot of opportunities there, even from, they had eight trees, and they would be likely to delay to go in, I'll try to, legislation there, just beyond the liability.
And the last question is about the capacity in the South Hills reservoir, because I know when, like, we had the Civic Fire, it detached our system, we almost ran out of water just after that one fire. And if we shut the electricity off and we have a fire, what, is there a plan for backup generations or make sure that we still have the capacity to fill our reservoirs with our funding capacity, or is that something that's in the plan?
So the, yes, water system has backup generators at most locations, so-
So we continue to serve our reservoirs and get water there and put the fire out in South Hills?
That's the plan, yeah, that's part of their risk analysis and things that they're-
Okay, good, all right, well, thank you very much, that's, that's great. And Mindy, do you want to take back the queue or do you want me to continue?
Commissioner, I just get that one.
Absolutely.
You, you continue, because my internet, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You continue, John, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, I did, thanks.
I was just going to add that, that as an Oregon utility, we're fairly immune to unintentional disruptions, where legislation going forward will be important to us is if we preemptively shut people down, and that's, that's where proper notice and other things will be part of that legislative discussion. If you, if you just shut people off with no warning, that's going to be handled differently than if you provide people with a warning, so. Fairly immune to natural disruptions, but it's good, and much more immune to the impacts of that than in California, where you have the first condemnation type of laws, so, but more to come on that, I think that we're, we're, some work ahead of them when it comes to, to play a lot of our mitigation, so more to come there.
All right, well, thank you very much, great presentation, and you guys did great, if you're looking forward to some more quick work out here. So good, the next item, agenda item number three, the strategic plan discussion, it'll be with Frank, thank you.
Yes, good evening, commissioners, I'm going to pull out the presentation here, give you just a second. So, thanks for your time this evening, I know it's great to have these discussions, especially helpful for us. I have, you got prior to the meeting some information on the strategic plan, there were actually two different versions in there, one was the one that's presently in effect, and the other one was some, I'll say a proposed draft, something that we could potentially modify going forward. Just a little insight, was written originally in 2017, modified in 2018, that's, that's what the stars there are for, but I wanted to give you a little bit of perspective on this, and so, you know, one of them is that not everything is strategic. We, we do consider our operational effectiveness, for example, to be a prerequisite to strategic pursuits, you know, if we don't operate well, it's almost like we need the right to then position the utility going forward, so just because operational excellence might not be in there, it's not that it's not important, and just because something's not important doesn't mean it's strategic, you know, the strategic and importance aren't always aligned, and large isn't always that way too, you know, I'll, I'll give you an example I think you might relate to, which is the Lieber Canal. That could be incredibly expensive, and yet, when I think about the canal and its future, it's very important also, it's not necessarily strategic in the sense that it's part of the path to position the utility favorably going forward. So large, important don't always match to be strategic. Also, the other part of this is that the strategy is about the path, it's not necessarily about the outcome, although you need to have a vision and a mission, this really describes the, the path moving forward and with the intention of aligning the utility and the board and the public behind it. We did some assessments, we've kind of done an ongoing view of our plan, there are some things that we like about it, it's, it's pretty concise, it's easy to align the utility behind what it contains, there's also some things that seem to be still relevant, emergency preparedness, disaster recovery, resiliency, major resource decisions on the electric side, but what, what a challenge for us at the moment, and it's fairly, and I mean, it's, the dynamics of this is it has increased a lot, is that as a utility, we tend to do a lot of long-term planning. The, the things that we do tend to be decades in length, and we're doing this under an environment that is incredibly turbulent right now, market conditions, the political landscape, the environment, local views, legislative, regulatory, everything seems to be, to be changing, and yet, we're being asked to look at things from a decade or two or three in length, and that's, that's a significant challenge. It's definitely something that we can, an environment we can work within, but it's important to recognize that's a challenge for us. We also think that there's opportunities, you know, we think about resiliency, emergency preparedness, we don't always think about financial, we don't always think about workforce or our information systems, we tend to think about transformers and pipes and pumps and infrastructure. Resiliency is more than that, and I don't know that we have fully captured that when we think about preparing for and mitigating for attenuating circumstances. Also, really feel like the water utility and the electric utility have really different and strategic processes and conditions that they're working within. The positions of the two utilities are much different, and if you just want to think about the pricing relative to comparators, the electric utility is kind of middle of the pack, the water utility is by far the lowest in its pricing, so they're, they're coming at this a little bit differently, and they have different strategic needs. The other thing that, kind of how we've approached strategic planning is the role of the values becomes really important in how we do things, so the strategy is, okay, here's what we're going to do, and the values are how we are going to go about achieving those, and we feel like both of those are important. The, kind of the recommend, is kind of a summary of the recommended changes, we do feel like it's, it's good to keep this simple still, it does translate well and aligns the utility quite well. We do think, and you'll notice in the draft, that water and electric are highlighted differently, and that's because of the different positions that the utilities are in. We also wanted to put a little more definition behind the strategic phases and look at that slightly differently, a little bit more specifically. I think the previous plan just was, was descriptive, but it didn't have the milestones in it that were as definitive as the, as the new one, so we wanted to be a little more definitive around that. I would, I would describe that as kind of the, the phase that we're in, if we were playing chess, we've, we've done our opening, this is now the middle game, we're, we're positioning the pieces to accomplish the, the two really largest strategic challenges around resiliency and then resource decisions on the electric side. We also, there's some enhanced values in there, we added secure as well, this is important, we, we have safe, but we added secure, and that's both for physical assets as well as cyber assets. I think when you, when you think about the integrity and the security of the data that we hold for customers, that's important to us, and it should be part of the, something that we value and state so in the values. We also split out responsible into both affordable and environmental, and added and left a placeholder for some, for a workforce value that will probably talk a lot about teamwork, alignment, motivation, and those types of things as far as our, our workforce that's, that's in development. And so, the values are slightly enhanced from what they were before, and we also wanted to make sure that, that those values that recognize the kind of this right side of this, this shows that there's tension sometimes between those, and we're willing to discuss those, and I think those are important debates when you look at the trade-offs between reliable and, and affordable, for example, we've talked about that one in the past and some of the others. So this is, if I were to describe the, the middle game that we're, we're in, and you can see there's an important horizon for us, and in fact, the board is part of that important horizon. There's significant, and can be significant turnover in a board, so I think it's important that we look at kind of two to four-year windows, what are the really important milestones? The electric ones are on the top and the water ones are on the bottom, from a strategic perspective. On the electric side, what jumped out to me in, in, in talking with a number of other people about how we set up for this, you know, billions of dollars worth of resource decisions, is the Integrated Resource Plan. That's probably one of the most important strategic pieces of work that we will do in the next five years, and positioning and understanding what are the requirements, what are the principles of the resources we need to pursue to meet our load, to meet the needs of our customers. We also have a second one on the electric side, which has to do with the ballooning, I think it described it as this balloon of aging assets. That's a condition of how EWEB evolved, the 60s and 70s was a tremendous growth period around Eugene, a lot of infrastructure investment, and all that infrastructure is aging at the same time, and so, we're going to have to attenuate and mitigate and make really good choices around our asset management on the electric side while doing it in a way that's more resilient. So there's a big bubble of aging assets that we're going to have to mitigate in a way that makes us more resilient and prepared going forward. Some of these others, I don't want to read this for you, some of these others really set up that we can have some flexibility within the, the customer side of the equation to balance supply and demand on the electric side, and then the water side because of the fact that we've invested so much in the Hayden Bridge, and it's really looking at this source-to-tap approach, that we've invested significantly in Hayden Bridge, we've invested significantly in the pump stations, and now we're looking at the base level reservoirs and the interconnecting transmission work to make that improve operations, improve resiliency within, within the city limits primarily. Also, the recovery of the watershed is important in that, that source-to-tap approach there, and we do have a, a drinking water master plan, excuse me, just a second. We do have a drinking water master plan that is, is statutorily required every 10 years, and then, really, the important part is that we eventually and likely within this window of time need to design and commission a second treatment plan on the Willamette. I think the, the wildfire was eye-opening for us and for our community, hopefully we'll have some access to different forms of funding that, that may help with the, the design and commissioning and construction of that. Just a little bit about where this fits, strategic planning is, is part of what sets the stage for a number of different control mechanisms for the board, long-term financial plans, capital plans, all come out of, there's a, there's a pretty large strategic section in, in all of those. It also drives some other plans, the Water Master Plan I mentioned earlier, the Integrated Electric Resource Plan, ultimately coming back to, here's the revenue requirement, here's the rates, here's the operating budget for the utility, and the board plays a role in, in all of those through your various approvals, and then there's a number of different policies that this drives, and I'm not going to go read the last slide because it's a, it's a, an eye exam, but the strategic directives from the board, there's a whole series of those, so the, the strategic plan actually has mechanisms to drive those decisions, drive that framework into the organization, and so, it, it is really one of the most important things that we look at when it, when it comes to how do we implement this across the utility? Where do, where do we want to take the utility? How do we want to position it? What's a priority? And also, what therefore is not a priority. This is the eye test, I'm not going to give it to you, this was just put in for reference, since I knew you had the presentation ahead of time, just a number of different types of, of implementation policies. That's, that's why sometimes things are not directly stated in a strategic plan, there's, you might say that we want to be sustainable, or we might want to be environmental, and then that actually rolls into various policies and various budgets and various capital and other, other decisions from there. What I'm, what we're asking for tonight really is getting your perspectives, you were given a, a draft change to the plan, it's a more of enhancement, a revision, had some things that were more specific in it, was actually shorter also, which is probably hard to do, but I wanted to get your impressions of it and open it up for discussion and questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm entertaining queue, we got 31 minutes left, there's five of us, so do the math, I want to respect everybody's time, and so, I'll, I'll open the queue and see if anybody has a burning desire to go, and if not, I'll, I'll call on people, so, I'll look for a show of hands, if anybody wants to jump in the queue, that's fine, and if not, I'll do it alphabetically. John B?
Uh, do it reverse alphabetically, I went first last time, I like to hear what the other commissioners say first.
Uh, Matt?
Tell me if the audio's no good, and I'll take off my headphones, is it okay right now? Yeah, okay. First, Frank, I really appreciate the strategic plan, the way you put it together, brevity is fantastic, and I feel like you have, you and your team have boiled down so much of what EWEB is aiming for into a couple of pages, that it's really remarkable and well-done, so thank you. And I appreciate also the broad brush that a strategic plan needs to be, and I feel like you hit the mark with this. There are only a couple of things that I would bring up, well, one, I, I guess the same thing as, as the last topic, I feel like there's may not be enough time for our conversation here, so just, you know, as we're thinking about strategic plan conversations, it might be worth allocating more time next time. Two things, there, there's a, a reference to EWEB's need to address greenhouse gas emissions, and I appreciate that that's in here. I would say that I think we should be clear that, from my perspective, that EWEB has an opportunity to and perhaps obligation to address community-wide obligation, or greenhouse gas emissions, that it's not just the emissions from our electricity, but it's the emissions across the community that we're looking at and we have an opportunity to address. For example, EWEB has already taken some bold steps to help increase the rate at which people adopt electric vehicles, and that's outside of our, you know, general services of just providing electricity and water to people that want it, we're trying to expand and help people get off of fossil fuels, and I think we can do that in other places too, and so I think addressing community-wide greenhouse gas emissions would be an important caveat to help us broaden that direction. And the other thing that I think could, well, should be added here is some measure of addressing the importance of equity, especially as we look at the price of, you know, just, if we wanted to just put it in affordability, we could talk about the importance of protecting low-income customers, and we already do this, this isn't introducing something new, but I think it's a, a value that we hold that should be reflected here, is the importance of protecting populations who are, you know, lower income or other vulnerable populations as we make our policy decisions. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Sonia?
It's really having a hard time on muting, it's taking forever, and then I click it again, and then it re-mutes, sorry about that. So I, I really like the, the organizational- and then it remutes. Sorry about that. So I really like the organizational values and how that was split out a little bit differently, the safe and secure and splitting that out to call out more of those cyber assets, too. I like the splitting out of environmental from the, it started with an R. Anyway, responsible. I think the responsible line that it was in before, I think that makes it a little bit cleaner. Before, it was like, well, we're responsible for financial, but then also responsible for, you know, the environment. It makes it real clear that there's two sections there that we are, you know, trying to call out. The workforce, I'm curious where that will go, but I'm interested in how that might play with, you know, equity, diversity, inclusion, that kind of framework. Very interested in how that might bubble to the surface there. And then I do echo some of what Matt is saying around climate change, although I think for me, I'd like to see it in, as we develop more of the plan around how we want to address the community projects, I'd like to see the climate change really pulled out. I think in the values section, it's just fine how it's pulled out. I don't think we need to add any more there. But I would like to see more in the projects, because that's really where the rubber meets the road in what we do as an organization. And I don't see that as much in the, you know, big, long term strategic projects. So maybe if there's a way to pull that out more, I would be interested in that. But otherwise, I think it's a really great plan. I do note that we're starting to get longer on the values. And I know when I first started on the board, there were like six, eight. It's starting to creep longer and longer. So it's an interesting progression. I think it's the right progression, but it's also interesting. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy.
All right. Hopefully, my audio will work. So a couple of things. One, I really like that you added workforce in there because I feel like that's something that we keep hearing about periodically, Frank, when you kind of give us updates about the utility. It's not just like workforce wellness or how people are feeling, but also workforce development and how sometimes we can't recruit enough people for some of these critical jobs that we need. So I think that that was really important and appreciate that you added that. In the affordability piece, I know that we, that has long time been a part of our strategic plan. And I just want to make sure this kind of wraps it into the climate piece, but part of that affordability for lower income folks who rent isn't so much that the rates need to be affordable, but also that they have the whole conservation piece, too. So, right, those all go together, which kind of ties into the climate piece that Matt was saying. Sonya touched upon, too. I agree with that as well, is somehow bring that a little bit more to the forefront because so much of what we do is affected by climate change or climate challenges that we have. And so instead of just mentioning it as EWEB lowering our own greenhouse gas emissions, I do think that somehow it needs to be a little bit more outward facing or community, community based. I'm not using the right terminology, but I think I'm getting my point across. Those are my only comments right now.
Thank you. John B.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a well crafted plan. One of my concerns is similar to Matt, I think it, a little bit deeper dive is going to be required on my part to go into this because what I've seen in other jurisdictions and other things is you give, you give the organization a strategic plan and say, go this direction. And it sounds good on the 10,000 foot level, but as it comes down, you know, so you guys have your marching orders. This is where I want you to go. And we're looking at it from 10,000 feet. And by the time we get to look at it again, we're at 1,000 feet, we're like, is that really where we're going to go? And then when it gets to 100 feet, it's too late for us to turn that boat. And so I think it's really important that we make sure that, you know, these things that are in phase two, if we're saying, yes, this is our strategic plan, am I really on board with phase two? And am I in touch at this point enough with, one, the customers that I'm representing? And two, the knowledge of the utility to know that that's where I want to go. So for me, I need a little bit more input on this because I can see this, you guys taking this ball and saying, you guys in 2021 said, take that ball and run. And in 2023, when you're at the 20 yard line trying to score and the community values may have changed or whatever, it's too late for us to stop. So I want to make sure that we flush through this. I'm on board, I think, especially with a lot of the things that you said, but I still need to get ramped up a little bit more before I could say, yes, this is the, these are all the goals that I want to see put forward and that type of thing. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I'm gonna laugh. Thank you. I agree. Ideas, I'm generally in agreement with everything that's been said. Two minor topics is the workforce that we talked about. I know that getting into the weeds, but that's what I like to do is that, you know, that when we get into that, the diversification, and I saw in the last month's presentation where we had some positions been open for over a year, some of the technology, like meter technicians and AMI, we had to sub it out. And knowing that LCC is going to spend 35 million bucks on a high tech facility to train local people, I would hope we would coordinate to, you know, on a regional thing. And we could probably help train people in our local workforce because there's skilled trades and professions such as that. So just a side thought there. And then I'd like to know what other people think about regional water supplies. Because we talk about affordable housing in these areas, and you look at the bedroom communities where the only developable land exists anymore, they have very, very constrained water supplies. And we've already been through this, we supply water to the NIDA. And you think about where Cottage Grove, Crestwall gets their water, and where Cobra, Junction City, and everybody else, they don't have the resources nor the supply that we have. And if this region wants to have an affordable building supply of housing that people can afford, anybody can get electricity, but nobody can get water. And if we don't think about being that regional supply, we had a big uphill fight for some of those that you didn't remember that for, growth issues, when we got sued when we supplied Manida with water. But I'm just thinking, throw that out there and see if other people have that thought because that's going to take, we have the capacity, but if we're going to be a supplier of water to other communities that we can serve very easily, we've got to think about that because that's a huge move on our part. So I don't know if other people share that sentiment, but I think it's the only way we can get affordable back into the housing conversation is by giving them that opportunity. So that's what I have. Thank you. So with that, we're way ahead of schedule. Thank you very much, everybody. Other comment, Mindy.
I have a question, kind of directed at John Borowski, but also maybe a little bit to everybody, is that I feel like we're starting to kind of run into some resistance here. And I think, Frank, it's because you have this vision and this strategic plan that only two of the commissioners have been involved in crafting. And then I've been with it for a little while. And I appreciate that you are having these work sessions to bring the rest of us along. I think that's a really good idea. But I'm concerned, or my worry is that we're not doing it in a meaningful enough way to keep us moving on because I don't want us to keep getting stuck with people saying, people needing more information. So I'm just curious, like, I don't want to put you on the spot necessarily, John Borowski, but I am just curious, like, what would it take for you to have a deep enough dive, or Matt, or any of us, so that we can figure out like what the plan is instead of talking about what the plan should be?
Well, you know, that's a, that's a good question. Like I said, I'm fairly new. And I think Frank brought this up in the fact that, that, you know, the commission turns, can turn over every two years. And so doing it in a timely manner is something that I'm very willing, willing and able to do. But I also want to do it in a conscientious way so that, one, if there's values or things that I feel need to be added or subtracted, that I can give a good qualitative view on that and see if the other board members are in there. I'm not thinking that this needs to be a year long type of an issue, but, but, you know, and these are things that could maybe be brought up in the one on ones and those types of things is what I'm thinking. Again, I want to be as conscientious as I can being a new board member. I can only pull the new board member card for probably another month or two. And so I got to use it while I can.
So I might add a little bit, something that might help from my perspective, Commissioner. So part of brevity is that you start using terms or phrases that mean something to those who know what they are. But, you know, and I'll use the statement I made earlier. I think the Integrated Resource Plan is probably one of the most important strategic things we have to do in the next couple of years. I happen to have a knowledge of what I think goes into that. Commissioner Borowski might go, oh, an integrated resource plan. What is that? You know, how does that fit in, fit in here? And it's incredibly important in the sense that if I start to look at some of the comments I've heard earlier, which is around the principles of renewable energy or carbon intensity and some of those, an Integrated Resource Plan sets out what your principles are in your acquisition of, in this case, electric generating resources. So that's a, that's a debate point for the board to come together and say, what is the trade off between renewables, carbon intensity, reliability, affordability of the resources we need to go pursue? What's the order of those things? Now, that's not spelled out in the plan. And that's probably something that spending time with, with the commissioners on what, where some of this content falls would, would be helpful. The thing that I struggle with a bit, and I know it's probably when Commissioner McCray brought it up, and I think some of you brought it up, there's times when I question as a utility, what is our role in the community? And there's some, there is, there is real tension between some of these values. And I think Commissioner Carlson phrased it right. We used to actually limit the number of values that you have. If you start to pull out something strategically out of the values, it instantly makes it more important than those. And, and the thing that we, that I think is really important, if the board doesn't feel this way, that's, that's okay. We need to make sure we all understand it. I believe that all of those, it's an and situation. We need to be safe and reliable and affordable and environmental. You know, all those things are important to our customers. If we start pulling out one and saying, oh, our role, we need to be more into this, and it's a community thing, does that change the balance? And if it's, if it doesn't, it's conscious? Great. We, then we will recognize that. And let's say we just said reliability is the top notch. We're going to, we're going to put in this strategy that we're going to have the best reliability ever anywhere. We would know that there's a price to that. And so if that's a conscious decision, that's great. That's where I've struggled a little bit with pulling out certain things and highlighting certain things. It doesn't mean that there aren't avenues and mechanisms to do that. You know, one of the things that our climate change policy actually states is that we will help the community decarbonize. That's actually one of the five tenants of that policy. So that policy is, is really an enforcement or an execution mechanism for the plan. And maybe some of this becomes part, are we comfortable with the climate change policy we have? We sort of brushed over it so quickly, I don't remember when it was, two years, two years ago? It really, maybe that's a key debate point for us. And, and so I absolutely understand that, and on the EV front as well, we've, we've had some internal debates. What is our role in educating the public on the value of EVs? Should we be doing that? Or should be, you know, as a utility, should we make sure that, that the electricity is as clean as possible, it's affordable, so that people want, want to electrify, that, that we can facilitate the installation of charging stations and things like that? So we do debate quite a bit what our role is in trying to balance those things. It's, and maybe it needs a little bit more work in some of, in some of that area. Because I know every single commissioner that comes, comes to the plate with their own interesting ideas and priorities and passions, which is, which is great. But we get, we're in the business of and, kind of live in the land of and when it comes to all the things we want to do. I would say the same thing about regional water. It's not necessarily easy to do regional water. And I think we actually have some other priorities before regional water, regionalization. It can be very expensive, too. And so when I would look at this, Commissioner Brown, I would say our first job is to make sure that we have redundancy and resiliency in our system here before we start to go out and look, and actively look for regional partners. Now, if someone came to us, then there's, there could be an opportunity there that we would want to facilitate and work with them on. But I'm not, I'm not hearing that from staff at the moment.
Fine. Thank you. Sonya, you on the queue?
Okay, there we go. Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about the diagram on slide 17. I'm curious, because I think that this may be an indication for how you prioritize the different values. You know, you're saying and, you know, we're, yeah, yeah, this, this over here. I'm curious how, you know, how it comes, these different decisions and how the strategic plan ends up with staff allocation. I think that's what this means, is that this is a percentage of like the time that staff are allocated to that? Is that what this means?
No, this, this was actually a, just a representation, Commissioner. When, what we would do in this is to look, if, if the board came back and said, we want to elevate something here, what we would do is we would figure out how, how we're going to measure each of these five points. So reliability on the electric side might be related to safety or safety or some combination of a metric. Affordability might be where are we compared in our comparator group. Environmental might, might be measured as to our metric tons of, of impact on the community. So there's, this was just to represent that there could be a difference between where we think we are today and where the board wants to go. This, this was not based on real data. This was just based on, but we would, we would figure out what those measurements or what representations those measurements could be.
Okay, I see. So I mean, what it, what it kind of outlined to me is, is how you prioritize when there are trade offs among those issues, which ones win? That, I mean, you know, roughly. You know, for me, it was interesting that the goal on here was actually lower than where we're at for affordable. I mean, I, I would think that that would be, the goal would be to have affordability, you know, higher, though there is a trade off with affordability and having something, a system that's safe and reliable. So obviously, you know, we have, we have safe and reliable. I think that those are a higher priority because that's our, that's our bread and butter. I mean, we have to be safe. We have to be reliable because there's other implications on affordability, environment, and the community if we don't prioritize those two items. Same, same on the, on the environmental side. I mean, the more that we don't focus on that as a community as a whole to deal with climate change. Now, obviously, this is everybody in the same boat. We're not going to be able to move the needle there, but we, we have a responsibility there to move it. But how does that play against, you know, affordability? So it was just, it was interesting to me to see how there might be some, some differences here. I do appreciate that the safe and the reliable are, are definitely in that higher metric. I do like that maybe the goal on here would be a little bit I do like that maybe the goal on here would be a little bit, would be further out and kind of push a little bit more on the environmental side, but I do want to make sure that we still have that attention to affordability, because if we price ourselves out, like you were saying earlier, Frank, with the EVs, if our electricity is so expensive, nobody's going to switch to it. Even if it's the cleanest thing, you know, out there, they're not going to switch to it, because they can't afford to.
Yeah, well, I think what you've pulled out, Commissioner Carlson, is the purpose of this kind of exercise and looking at the values associated with whatever strategy you're implementing. And that's why, to me, the values really highlight how we're going to get there. And I don't know that you do this organizational balance, spider chart, for, as sort of a generalized statement, although I know that we think all of these things are important. But I think if you got into an Integrated Resource Plan and you're making decisions around the resources that you would like to procure going forward, you might make a very conscious choice to give up affordability or environmental attributes, and that could be just a very fair choice. Or you could say, we're going to risk a little bit on the reliability front, or the capacity front, or however you would characterize that. So I don't see this, I'll call it the spider chart, just to, I don't see a spider chart being a generalized, here's a spider chart for the whole organization. I see this as something that when we get into an issue, we might want to look at these five elements and say, okay, where are we now, and where do we think we can, you know, see the tension and make some real conscious choices? I think, you know, that's, it's a very fair approach to look at these things. I think the plan probably calls out, we recognize that all five of these are important, they're of value to us, we recognize there's tension between those, that in some cases, one thing might become more important than the other. You know, even when we talked about, earlier, we talked about risk mitigation. Now, that's a safety issue, but it can, and also, there's some diminishing return on the investments you make. And so you could say, we want to be the safest utility ever, and your reliability might go down, because you're PSPS-ing every three weeks. And so, you know, I think, I think these are really almost topic-specific, but I think having the values identified is important to then build these from. So, but I think you hit a great point on that.
It's interesting that the workforce piece, I mean, I can see why you left that layer out of here, but, you know, it does play into it, and how does it play into it is another interesting, you know, I know that you're kind of toying with how that plays with the system, but it's about resource allocations, it's about, you know, how you have, you know, what capacity staff have, what abilities do staff have to even, you know, play in this spider chart and make these things a reality as well? So it's interesting to have that as another called-out section, and how it kind of impacts the decisions that are made.
Yeah, there's some opportunity cost there as well. You can't do everything for everybody at the same time. I will just make one comment about something Matt mentioned, and it was, there were some notes in the editing that, and had to do with equity, and I do agree that that's missing. Something in the affordability piece related to equity is something that we'll figure out how to incorporate. It's just, it is missing, and I wanted to acknowledge that while we're all together.
Okay, thank you. We're almost out of time, but does anybody have a burning desire to make some closing comments or anything else? I know that we've had kind of a second round for both Mindy and Sonya. Does anybody else have anything they want to say to staff or to each other before we adjourn?
I want to just say one more thing. It goes back to, I know that, Commissioner, I know you, Commissioner Brown, I know Commissioner Carlson, remember this, when we did the first plan, there was a lot of back-and-forth like this, where, you know, I would take what I thought I heard, and I would go back, and I would craft, and have one-on-ones and other discussions, and bring something back, and it would be okay. It would be, well, there might be a missing issue, or there might be something that we need to be more clear or elaborate on. And so I will take what I've heard and try to incorporate this into the next draft, or if there's a particular subject that comes out of this that we can dive, take a deeper dive into, then we will. But this is useful for me.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, you know, if we're going to close, I'd just like to say something. Thank you very much, Mindy, for allowing me to have the gavel. I'm sorry that you had some technical issues, but I really want to say that I really appreciate it when Mindy had the dialogue with John about finding out what's it take to get you into this understanding. I wish we had more of that dialogue, and I encourage everybody to interact amongst the board members and things such as that, because that's really good for me, and I like to see it go in that direction, rather than us and them. It's, you know, us and us, and them and them, and us and them. So we kind of mix it up a bit, but I really appreciated that, by Mindy bringing that out, and thank you very much. So if there's not anything else, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, last week I had an opportunity to meet with staff to go over some power trading and hedging conversation, and it was, it was really informative. Staff said they'd be happy to do it again with anybody else. You know, we went down through into the weeds on some things, and it was really a very eye-opening thing. And first off, I want to thank the staff for going with me and letting me geek out with them, and I found that they liked to geek out almost as much as I do. So I would recommend that any of you guys that want to do that presentation, because it was very enlightening. So I wanted to thank staff and get you guys to maybe do it as well.
Thank you. Any other closing comments before we head our way? If not, we'll look forward to everybody on a dry Friday. Thank you very much, Mother Nature. Looking forward to that, and we're going, that's a great group of people you put together. Thank you very much. That's going to be really, really a good thing up there. So looking forward to everybody at 8:30. EWEB Boat Landing, just past the Lebrun Dam. Be there and have fun. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thanks for all the feedback. Appreciate it.
Okay. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
See you Friday.
Bye, Dave.